Good evening. At this time, please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers, if you desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request-to-speak form available at the front entrance and present it to our city clerk. Speakers who are participating via Zoom, as well as those physically present, will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each person is allowed three minutes speaking time. Our city clerk will now make a Zoom broadcasting announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of May 25th is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N. 2920 issued by Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID 822-1072-9401, and enter password number 740828. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council meeting for May 25th, 2021. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Chaplain Timothy Isom of Market Place Chaplains. If you would please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father, we thank you for this evening and we thank you for this day because each day is a gift. And so, Lord, we just take pause and thank you. We pray for the mayor and the city council and the staff. We pray that you would guide them, give them wisdom, and help them in the decisions that they are to make. We pray for our first responders and our fire and our sheriffs. And, Lord, we just pray that you would protect them and guide them, be with their families. Lord, we also pray that you be with all of the people within the City of Grand Terrace. Guide and direct them. We thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. We do not have special presentation tonight, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by city council at one time without any discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there requests to remove items from consent calendar at this time? All right. Seeing no takers, we'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Motion for approval.
Second.
So, a motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So, we'll open public comment for items not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak during this time?
We have one written comment that came in, and we have an individual chairperson, Veronica Vargas, that's joined our meeting. However, we'll need to ask if she wants to speak on public comment.
Okay. So, this is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda. And because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. There may be a request for a brief response from staff, and an item may be agendized for a future meeting. So, Madam City Clerk?
Counsel, we received an email from James Timoney, and Mr. Timoney wanted to -- who currently serves on the foundation of Grand Terrace, wanted to invite the city council and all residents to come out and participate in the annual Memorial Day event on Monday, May 31st, at 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Wall of Freedom Monument located at Veterans Freedom Park. He has stated they're honoring those who sacrificed the freedom that morning and would also like to publicly honor and recognize two of Grand Terrace community members who both spent several years serving the community. Both have recently retired from the nonprofit board. He wants to thank former President Cindy Grande and former treasurer Sally Holt for their time, dedication, and sacrifice in supporting the City of Grand Terrace, its volunteers like these who behind the scenes work to support our community and partner with our city to make this an amazing place to live.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And Ms. Vargas says that she does not have any comments. All right. So, we will close public comments and move back to our agenda. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. So, we'll move to new business, beginning with Item 8 on the agenda, Amendment Number 6 to extend the library lease agreement with the County of San Bernardino. I have City Manager Harold Duffy.
Good evening, Mayor. For the record, Harold Duffy, City Manager. So, before the council tonight to extend the library lease or Amendment Number 6 for fiscal year 21, '22. So, this is in line with the 2030 Vision Statement. The goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships by working collaboratively with the community groups, private and public sector agencies, to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting youth, seniors, and the community. The County of San Bernardino has operated the city's public library at the Civic Center since its opening in 1985. Some of the services that are offered at the library, the Grand Terrace Library houses over 10,000 books and DVDs. The library offers a wide variety of fun, free, and educational programs for infants and adults. The Grand Terrace Branch Library is the designated cooling center for the City of Grand Terrace during their regular business hours. And they also have volunteer opportunities for teens and adults to come by and volunteer. So, what does Amendment Number 6 include? This is the first of a two-year, three-year extensions that was in the original Amendment Number 5. So, they're exercising that option. So, for fiscal year 21, '22, the annual lease -- I'm sorry, this should be the annual -- the monthly lease payment is $22,680 for the first year. For the next year, it'd be -- so, for the next monthly amount, it's 23 -- I'm sorry, this is an annual amount, I'm sorry, $23,160. And then also, for the third year, it would be $23,520. It's a 2% escalator in each year. So, staff recommendations that approve Amendment Number 6 with the San Bernardino County Library and authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number 6. Without available for any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. There are questions of staff at this time. All right. Seeing none, we'll open public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further deliberation.
Move the recommendation.
I'll second it.
A motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Any discussion on this item? All right. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Move to Item 9, which is a public convenience or necessity finding for grocery outlet. They are asking to replace an existing Type 20 off-site beer and wine license with a Type 21 off-sale general license. We have Steve Weiss, Planning and Development Services Director. And I don't think that that's Steve Weiss. I think that's Heidi Aguirre.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor Protem and members of the council, for the record, Heidi Aguirre, Assistant Planner. This item supports Vision Statement Goal Number 3, to support economic development by supporting local businesses. Grocery Outlet has recently submitted an application to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Department, and they're proposing to replace their existing Type 20 beer and wine license with a Type 21 off-sale general license. The Type 21 off-sale general license allows the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption of premises where sold and minors are allowed on the premises. On the background, on May 14th, 2019, the city council made a positive finding of public convenience or necessity for a Type 20 license, which authorized Grocery Outlet the sale of beer and wine. And on February 20, 2020, Grocery Outlet opened for business. Grocery Outlet is located in the Barton Road Village commercial zoning, and the business is occupied on -- occupies an 18,200 square feet, approximately commercial tenant space. The retail of alcohol sales are classified as permitted use in this zoning. I'm sorry, did I skip a -- sorry about that. The Alcoholic Beverage Control Department requires the applicant Grocery Outlet to obtain a Type 21 off-sale general license prior to selling distilled spirits to their customers. The ABC Department has informed staff that there is an overconcentration of active licenses within the census tract 7106. Based on the state's standards, when there is an overconcentration, the applicant is required to obtain a public convenience or necessity finding by the city council prior to the ABC Department issuing the approval. Grand Terrace is divided in four census tracts. Census tract 7106, highlighted in red, has an overconcentration of Type 20 and Type 21 licenses. The number of licenses is determined by a ratio of one license per 1,428 persons. The census tract has a population of 3,943 persons, and therefore, there should only be two off-sale licenses permitted. Having an overconcentration of the licenses doesn't mean that there's a negative impact on the census tract, but it does mean that the allowed number of licenses has -- based on their population ratio, has been exceeded. Census tract 7106, it is located on the Barton Road, which is considered the main corridor of Grand Terrace, and is where the commercial activity like restaurants, markets, pharmacies, gas stations are located, and therefore, there is a higher concentration of licenses. The existing Type 20 license that is currently held by Grocery Outlet will be replaced with a Type 21, and the existing number of licenses on this census tract is not going to change. Grocery Outlet's Type 21 general license will serve the public convenience by providing the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits to their customers as part of the complete shopping experience. In addition, it's going to eliminate vehicle trips on the city's corridor. The issuance of this license is not anticipated to result in any negative impacts to the surrounding area, and it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. The San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department did review the application and did not have any comments or concerns regarding this license. There will be no negative impact to the general fund, and in addition, the business will generate taxes. The city council is therefore recommended to make a finding of public convenience or necessity for a Type 21 off-sale general license for Grocery Outlet located at 22441 Barton Road, and also to direct staff to issue the attached public convenience or necessity letter to the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. This concludes my presentation. We have consultant Stephen Rollins, I believe he is on the line, and we also have Katie Schwartz. She represents Grocery Outlet via Zoom, and we are happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Aguirre. Are there questions of staff or the applicant at this time? All right. We don't have any questions. Did they have anything that they would like to add to your report? Mr. Rollins? Ms. Schwartz? No? Okay. We'll open public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion for staff recommendation because I do have a question of staff.
Okay.
I just didn't have it in time when you asked if we had any. I didn't have it right in my head yet.
All right. So, I have a motion for staff recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So, a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles, and Councilmember Allen, you had question?
Thanks, Mayor. So, Ms. Aguirre, I just wanted to ask you a question. Has there been any correspondence from any community members at all, businesses or residents at all, over this issue?
No, we haven't had any concerns or any issues that will negatively impact the decision of the Type 21 license.
Okay. Thank you.
And is this posted as the beer and wine license was posted in their window?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. So, we have a motion for staff recommendation from Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. If you would, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Move to Item 10, which is consideration of resolutions initiating proceedings to levy and increase annual assessments for fiscal year 21, '22 for the Grand Terrace -- City of Grand Terrace Landscape and Lighting Assessment District 89.1. We have Mr. Robert Eisenbeis, our interim Public Works Director. But no!
No.
But no, you are not --
Thank you, Mayor Magna Bo, Mayor Protem, and City Council. Shanita Tillman, Management Analyst.
Thank you, Shanita Tillman. I should have known that. I apologize.
No problem.
Please continue.
Thank you. The staff report before you supports the following goal. Goal number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recoveries -- recovery for services. In 1989, city council required developers to create an assessment district for maintaining landscape and lighting, and the city formed the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Number 89-1. Since then, there have been five annexations totaling seven tracts, each track being a zone within the district. Each year, an engineer's report is prepared for the assessment. The preliminary engineer's report is prepared by Will Dan -- prepared by Will Dan is included in your staff report. The following will be an overview of the seven tracts within our city. For each zone, the various costs are indicated along with the maximum assessment. And I'll just read the titles of each zone. Zone 1, Track 13364 Canal. Zone 2, Track 14264 Forest City Phase 2. Zone 3, Track 14471 Oriole. Zone 4, Track 17766 Greenbrier. Zone 5, Track 18793 Palomino. Zone 6, Track 18071 Jaden. And lastly, Zone 7, Track 18604 Tesoro and Grant Van Buren. At this time, staff is recommending the adoption of resolutions to initiate proceedings to levy annual assessments for fiscal year 21 and 22, ordering the engineer to prepare and file a report, preliminarily approve the engineer's report, declare the city's intention to conduct a public hearing on June 22nd, 2021, on the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Number 89-1, and to levy and collect annual assessments for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. I have the Public Works Director, Robert Eisenbeis, along with representatives from Will Dan, Xandra Evans, and Beatrice Medina on the phone.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman.
Thank you.
Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you for that report. This is the same question I asked Ms. Aguirre. Have you had any correspondence from any of the residents that are members of these -- that are residents of these tracts?
No, we have not received anything. It's expected that this is an assessment that they receive every year, so it should be expected.
Thank you.
So, the process we will follow is we'll adopt the resolutions, but then we'll come back for a public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. Further questions? All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I will make a motion to move the three staff recommendations, the three resolutions.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Allen for all three of the resolutions, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Any further discussion? All right. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And our last item of new business is approval and adoption of amendment -- amended City of Grand Terrace council procedures and the censure policy for city commissioners, boards, and committees. And I will look up and see who's actually presenting it before I call it. Our city attorney, Adrian Guerra.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I am presenting the final draft of the policies and procedures. This staff report supports council goal number five, engaging in proactive communication by establishing policies and procedures for meetings of the city council to promote community participation and promoting orderly meetings. As the council knows, we had two special meetings to discuss our policies and procedures, and then brought one item back for discussion for the full council at the regular meeting regarding the censure policy. And City Clerk and I have gone through those actions, those discussions, and we have compiled a, hopefully, a final draft of the updated policies and procedures, which incorporate each of the directives from the council. I'm going to go through the main items tonight, and then if you have any more specific questions, please not hesitate to ask. So, with respect to the references in the policies and procedures, we have changed the titles of the mayor, Protem, and the mayor to the chair and vice chair because there may be situations where the mayor is not present, or the mayor Protem is not present, and so, the person for chairing the meeting should be designated as the chair. So, we designated that. We also identified that each of our meetings are subject to the Brown Act, which is state law governing opening meetings for all legislative bodies. We identified those sections for not only reference to the council, but also to the public. One of the points that Councilmember Robles raised was putting an end time to meetings so that meetings would not go on endlessly into the evening without at least the council having a discussion about if that was really the desire. So, in Section 1.8, we added a procedure where at 10:00 p.m., the council will have a discussion about whether the meeting should continue if there are still open session items on the agenda. If it's a closed session, then, and where the public's not involved in that one, we could go ahead and continue without that vote. But if there are public items, then we would have that discussion so the public is aware we are going to continue. In Section 2.1, we added a procedure where if some -- if a council member were to pull an item from the consent calendar, that that individual would then make the motion on that action. And so, the thought is, is that since they're the one, you know, having the further discussion, that they should be the one to make the final action, whether it's to approve, deny, or take whatever action, they should be the one to make that motion. In Section 2.1, we clarified what the purpose is of city council communications and city manager communications. We can give a little bit more depth to that. And the thought was, as the council knows, we adopted a future agenda item discussion, which governs solely what our procedure is for adopting future agenda items. And so, the thought was, we want to make sure that the council communications is not used for that purpose. It's really used for informing the public about meetings that they've attended to -- attended on behalf of the city, other committees and commissions that they belong to, and want to update the council, things of that sort. Section 2.6 is a point I'm going to come back to, and I'll get the city clerk involved regarding the minutes and PowerPoints in the minutes. I believe she wanted some clarification on that point, so I'll come back to that at the end. Section 2.7, public hearings. So, we adopted a procedure in here that governs how a public hearing should be adopted. As we have seen in the few years I've been here, we have a standard model that we've applied in every case. So, if it's a zoning code amendment where there's a property owner coming to the council, the procedure works fine. However, if we have a situation where the city is proposing a change, where there really is no applicant, that procedure really doesn't fit the situation. So, what we have done is we've created a procedure for both situations. We have an applicant-initiated public hearing and a non-applicant public hearing. Let's see. In the ordinances section, we added a provision regarding second reading of ordinances will be placed on the consent calendar. The thought process is it's a little bit unnecessary to go through a staff report. We've already heard it once at the first reading, and the second time, we're basically giving the same staff report. And so, the thought is, put it on consent calendar. I still do the reading of the title of the ordinance like usual. And if the council wants to have a second discussion, more than welcome to, or if the public wants to, they're more than welcome to. But in most cases, that doesn't happen. So, the thought process is just put it on the consent calendar and quickly go through it. Let's see. We did add, and I think this is one of the biggest points of discussion, was decorum and order in meetings. And so, we added language in regarding appointment of a sergeant-at-arms at the discretion of the city council in Section 4.9, how to handle a meeting disruption in Section 4.10. We've had a lengthy discussion on the oath of office, acceptance of a code of conduct, and we listed each of the provisions of the code of conduct, and then a censure policy that would apply to the city council. And again, under censure policy rules, it is a due process proceeding, and so, there are procedures for notice and opportunity for the person being proposed to be censured, an opportunity for them to provide a response back, and then to have a hearing on that decision. So, that procedure is set forth in the new policies and procedures. And I believe that's the main aspect. I know we added at the end also, under Section 6, the procedures for motions, and we've changed it to that we have a motion right after the public comment period, and then that motion guides the discussion after there is a second. And then, so that procedure is laid out. The last point I will make before I'll ask the city clerk to discuss the PowerPoints in the minutes is the one request that we did have at the last meeting regarding the censure policy was to adopt a separate policy for each of the commissions and committees, and so, have that separately. So, we did include a draft of that policy that would be addressed to each of the individual commissions. You'll see in that policy that it identifies legislative body as city commissions and committees, and so, that policy will be included for each of their policies and procedures for them, for those bodies. And with that, I'm going to ask the city clerk to ask her question. I think she wanted some clarification on 2.6 regarding PowerPoints in the minutes. So, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. Debra Thomas, City Clerk, for the record. At the --
At the special meeting that we had, the discussion about the agenda packet and the PowerPoint location within the agenda packet, I had, staff had taken it upon itself to hyperlink all of those PowerPoints to an external location that is available to the public. That procedure has worked out okay overall. However, there has been one or two occasions where there has been difficulty accessing those PowerPoints because the links may not have connected properly or possibly were broken based on how they were uploaded. In order to maintain the integrity of the minutes, my question to you is, we, I was not directed to make those links, uh, those hyperlinks external, so can we still, to, to maintain that integrity of the minutes, continue to keep those PowerPoints within the agenda packet? However, locate those PowerPoints at the very end of the packet and create internal hyperlinks in the packet itself, where it will just jump you to the end when you want to look at it? It will assist with when you're downloading your packet and you're offline, if there is a network failure, if the links are broken due to program being changed. This might work better for transparency, and it will assist the public to be able to have that entire packet in one location. They can download it to their computer. And when they hyperlink it, they'll still be within the agenda packet and not being taken to a different location. And I wanted to get your opinion on that and to, to request that we proceed in that fashion instead.
Comments? Okay, Councilmember Allen, and then Councilmember Robles.
So, uh, thanks for, for that, Madam City Clerk. So when you talk about the integrity of the slides or the, is it, are you concerned about the, of them being lost? Or of them being changed or somehow, you know, hacked or something? Is that it?
Actually, no. If the link is broken and you can't access those PowerPoints, then those are being referred to in the minutes, and that's part of the record. So you wanna be able to have constant access to those.
Oh, okay.
And not have anything interfere with that.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Well, yeah, um, I didn't attend the, the last meeting, but before that, we had had a discussion that we wanted the, the hyperlink. But, you know, um, I don't know how to address the issue of your professional needs, so. I, I just, we can balance those, it'd be good.
What, the, with the PowerPoints being placed at the end, you're not gonna be scrolling through to get to your agenda.
Okay.
You're gonna be able to go directly to your agenda. They'll be placed at the end. If you choose to look at them, you can click a hyperlink and go to them. It'll, it'll take you there directly. But again, they'll just be stored at the end. They'll still be part of the packet for anybody to be able to look at. But I think that where my concern becomes into play is if the link is broken, if those are not able to be accessed because of any type of network situation, that the document can be downloaded to your computer, and you don't have to worry about having internet access.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you for addressing those issues. Any further questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll ask if we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so close public comment, and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Motion for approval?
Second. All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Wilson and a second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no request for future agenda items, so we will move into council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I wanted to commend the, the families who were responsible for pulling off the senior class parade. I also wanna commend the city's, uh, staff for their support, and the sheriff's department, and all the, all the players. It was a fantastic event that, and I'm so glad we were able to do that, to help those families that wanted to, to host that, to do that. So thanks to them, thanks staff, and all, everyone, anyone who was helped out with that. That was a great event. I watched it from the side, it was good, from the street. And, uh, I just wanna also say how important it is to, if you're interested in the city budget, to attend the Budget in the Park, you know? It's a nice evening out, we have nice parks, and you learn something about our budget. We had it last week in Rollins Park, and it's coming later this week at the Veterans', uh, Veterans Memorial Park. So encourage the residents to, that are interested in that sort of thing, to come on down and, and have a chat with us. I also wanna thank the city and everyone else responsible, Fire Department, for the hazardous waste disposal, household hazardous waste disposal event we had this past Saturday. I, I've been saving stuff up for all year long. I had so many batteries and petroleum products and stuff, so thank you very much for, for doing that, staff and, and Fire Department. That was a, a good thing to have for the city, appreciate that. And, and last, I just wanna, um, say that on Monday, this coming Monday is Memorial Day, and, um, so I'd like to encourage all those who, um, would like to, um, honor their, the veterans that have, um, the, who, you know, their veterans in their lives or whatever, to come on down to the Veterans Wall of Freedom at the Veterans Memorial Park. And, uh, Monday morning, and, um, have a great event there scheduled, and, um, hopefully we'll see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, at the mayor's initiation, I attended the California JPIA Governance Leadership Virtual Academy on the 4th through the 6th of May. It was basically a 8 to 1:30 each day program. And it was on Zoom. There were between 12 and 13 attendees. A lot of really, really good information was disseminated. It was about risk management, ethics, goal setting, working with each other, social media. They had panels, poll questions, and breakout sessions. Very qualified people, very intelligent people. And we were the, well, other than Hemet, we were the only inland empire represented, uh, group, so. So I was glad to be able to get involved with that, and I wrote down a lot of sticky notes about good ideas. Then I also attended the SCAG 6th of May General Meeting. They had a budget adoption, and one of the largest things they had was a racial equity, uh, early action plan that they voted on and voted to approve. Then, of course, the standard thing, like minutes, the 6th of April meeting, additional stipend payments, SCAG regional trans, uh, transportation plan, and some, uh, protection glass that was voted on so that the folks at the SCAG Representative Office could be protected in this pandemic. They also did an update on SCAG's regional travel demand mode, and there were a half a dozen other things. Went out to 17 items in the, in the long run. And everybody got filled in and then had an opportunity to vote. I'm the voting member, and so that was one of the reasons why I was there. Then, uh, on the 20th of May, San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Advisory, it was a special meeting by Zoom. It was to consider support about the 2020 Upper Santa Ana River Man, uh, River Water Shed, and in particular, the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan to be combined with the Regional Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And without going into a lot of detail, I did furnish some information. Deborah was kind enough to, to copy that information over to all the council members and the mayor, and Mayor Protem, and, uh, a lot of pretty, very glossy, uh, you know, uh, programs. But what was really important about it is, is the first time these similar schedules or similar presentations have been combined anywhere in California. As you know, we are very good with our water at this point. We've kept, you know, kept heads and tails on it all the way through. We are in good shape regardless of the drought, even though we are still in a drought condition. The, uh, this plan, this combined plan will be available for public comment until the 7th of June on the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District web. And then there will be a public hearing between the 9th of June and the 24th of June. And then finally, the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District will have a public hearing. And I think this might be a typo, but, and it's not my typo, but 15th of June is when they plan on voting on it. So I would guess that might be 15th of July, if you wanna check their website. That is the sum and total of the various meetings and so on. Please reference all the material that I sent over and, and take a look at all the glossy information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Yes, I just also wanna thank, um, the parent group led by Mario Sanchez for the senior parade. My granddaughter's a senior this year. It's been a tough year for her, and her family, and her were just completely elated, um, by it. I wasn't there because I was in San Antonio, Texas, visiting my kinfolk, as they call me over there. And I got pretty razzed about not being there, but they said that you were their mayor, so.
I was there.
So they teased me really good about that. But thank you, and thanks to the staff for all the hard work you've been doing with all these projects. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Bo Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, yeah, that senior parade was a great event, and, you know, I heard nothing but praises for it, and it's a good way to honor those seniors for a difficult year that they had. And then the household waste, you know, that was great too, you know? It's, took a lot of my oil also, and then you get a free oil container, you know, they don't, but it was really well organized, and it was a benefit for the city. Another couple of things, uh, just wanna emphasize, you know, the thing about homelessness and the problems that we're having in the inland empire. You know, there's a lot of, uh, churches and nonprofits that help the homeless, but then again, the homeless need, you know, they wanna go and get the help, and a lot of them don't. And this weekend, I, you know, observed a homeless man up there on top of the Alverna slope, and I saw a young lady feeding him, which, you know, it's kind-hearted and stuff, but something that looked right with the homeless gentleman. And, uh, so I called Mr. Duffy, and then the sheriff's came out, and I guess they arrested him for felony warrants. So I just wanna say, just be careful, you know? It's a good deed that you're doing, but you also have to be careful when you're, uh, doing stuff like that. And there is programs out there for them, and unfortunately, a lot of them don't take advantage of it. And, like, you know, if you buy gift cards, they use the gift cards, and they sell it for half the cash value. So, you know, there's programs in the San Bernardino City Mission, the Salvation Army, they have good institutions, uh, um, the missions, the, any, cause they have a thing called, uh, Martha's House, and they also help take care of, you know, individual gentlemen's who come in that are between the streets, and they help them get back on their feet. And that's a one- to-two-year program where they actually help them find jobs and stuff. So please, just be careful when you do confront somebody, 'cause you don't know what state of mind they're in. And I know it's, you know, you're, you know, by the grace of God, the feet are human beings, but just be careful. And I wanna emphasize, you know, the thing I saw, you know, I talked about SB 210, which was on the license plate reader cameras, on the archiving for the 24 hours. And something really bothered me Sunday when I was coming back from church over there by the Oracle Station stuff, stopping at a red light. And these two cars just went through the, the light, it was red. And, uh, you seen a gentleman walking around the city, he has a walker, he's always walking. And they almost ran him over, and as the second car, uh, male and a female were laughing about it. So something like that, you know, Sacramento, these people, they think about, you know, the special interest groups, why we don't need it for the archive of the video. But, you know, say if that gentleman did get hit, and something happened where we couldn't archive the video, then those people get away with it. You know, so we really gotta think about, you know, they need to think about what they're doing. And it just really upset me, especially when you see them laugh about it. And this poor guy, he's, has a hard time enough getting around town, and he's doing what he's supposed to, walking on a green light and a tra, and crosswalking. People just, as you say, just don't care about the law. And, you know, and the cities were post, you know, told to buy cameras and help to fight that, and then, uh, somebody in Sacramento, Senator Weiner, wants to get rid of it. And another thing I wanted, I forgot to mention about that is, um, catalyte converters, of course, theft's on the rise, and, uh, people who are, they're only getting between $50 to $75 for each converter, but it could cost residents thousands of dollars. If you could put some kind of marker on your converter, phone number or something, so if it does get recovered, they could use that for the case. 'Cause a lot of times when they recover these converters, there's 30 to 40 converters, but no marking. I don't know, future, if they're gonna put like, uh, the VIN number on something, but that's just something I forgot to mention. And, and last but not least, unfortunately, I won't be here in town for the memorial service 'cause I'll be driving to South Carolina. I guess rumor has it that I'm moving from Grand Terrace, I'm not moving from Grand Terrace. You know, my house is not in escrow, and if it did, I don't know if they got any money for it, but that's what I heard. So if I am not moving from Grand Terrace, I'm moving my son from Grand Terrace. So I won't be here for the memorial service to honor our country fallen. I just wanna say, my family always remember and honor those who have given their life to defend our freedom for this country, and those who fought and made it home but succumbed to the battle wounds later, in years or even decades later. You are honored to, and our family, and, to their family and spouses and loved ones who lost their loved ones during the country's battle or their fallen. Prayers for them and comfort, and it's still hard even after decades later. But, uh, thank you for men and women who gave the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. And God bless them and our service members who are serving in foreign countries right now. Semper Fi. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and safe travels to you. Well, there's been a lot said about the staff and, and the great work they're doing. So I'll bring it a little bit closer to home tonight. Ms. Aguirre, Ms. Tillman, very nice reports you gave tonight. Thank you so much for being here. And, um, thank you for staff, for all the work that they've been doing on special projects. And I will see those of you who are at, at the Memorial Day Service at Veterans Freedom Park on Monday. And I will end my remarks there and move to the city manager for his communications.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a few comments. So the council, as previously talked about, this is the Grand Terrace High School Class of 2021 Parade. These are pictures from our street cameras, two different angles. So I was able to just pull those off and post some of those on, online. But it was a very good event, and I think most people were very, very happy with it. And, but I also wanted to share that these things cost. And so I wanted to share what the cost was for the program. So for staff's planning coordination, it was about $700. For the sheriff's department planning is about $360. That's just planning the actual activity. And for the sheriff's department, for the actual parade, it costs about $2,600 in order to have about 10 officers safely secure the facility and make sure that there were no traffic issues associated with that. We also had maintenance staff that placed barricades, and they also had to be at, at Richard Rollins Park as the event kind of ended at the park. We had to get insurance, it was about $387. So a total cost of $4,400 was what it cost for that, for that parade. Next is the Blue Mountain Trail. So over the last couple months, the city staff has worked with the consultant, and so we've put together a 24-minute video that will start playing this week on, on Channel 3. We'll also send an e-blast out, and we'll, um, do a Facebook posting. It's a 24-minute video that gives an update of where we are with, in the Blue Mountain process. And so we'll, you'll see more about that in the next couple days. And with that, Mayor, I complete my report.
Okay, so no video tonight?
No video tonight, it's 24 minutes long. I think you guys wanted to sit through that.
All right.
But I will send you guys each a separate copy of it, if you'd like.
I'm okay if you just post it all. And send me the link when you post it. Thank you very much. We'll recess to closed session at this time. So those of you who will not be with us when we get back, we will have our next regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So we will be recessing to closed session for three items. First is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Mr. City Attorney, did I understand that I don't have to read all that information? You want me to go through it the first time, but not when I come back out? Okay. So we will have agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, Adrian Guerra, city attorney, Colin Tanner, deputy city attorney, employee organization Teamsters Local 1932. And unrepresented employees are the city manager, assistant city manager, city clerk, director of public works, director of planning and development services, management analyst, there are two positions, and principal accountant, assistant planner. The second item is a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9A. Case name is Sunny Days LLC versus the City of Grand Terrace. Case number CIVSB2107692. And the third item is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9B, one potential case. So at this time, we are in recess to closed session. All right. We'll reconvene to open session. The council met and closed session to discuss three items. The first, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6. There are no reportable actions on that item. We did give direction to staff. Item number two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9A. Also, direction to staff, no reportable actions. And on item number three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, again, direction to staff, but no reportable actions. So at this time, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda item must be made in writing and submitted to city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. All right. We are adjourned.